Mission meeting of February 11th. Please silence electronic devices and mutual phones. For the public hearings, first we have item P 31 as a proposed ordinance, and we have a continuance requested. Derek.
We approve the publication of the hearing of this item in the January 15th, 22nd, 29th, and February 5th, 2025 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you. Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nictarios Pitos, planning development economic growth. Item P 31 is PDE 250077. This is an ordinance establishing the KD 52 Community Development District Number One. However, this is recommended to be a continuance to the February 25, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 PM.
We have a motion?
Move continue.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. P 32, do we have proof?
We have proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, January 15th, 22nd, 29th, and February 5th, 2025.
Thank you. Derek?
Item P 32 is PDE 250081. This is an ordinance establishing KD 52 Community Development District Number Two pursuant to Chapter 190 of Florida statutes. However, this is requested for a continuance to the February 25, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 PM.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now we'll proceed with the public hearings. Would the county attorney please read the procedures for rezoning?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas regarding consent. The staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there's opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria for rezoning found within the board's land development code. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear, folks in who would like to testify?
Yes, sir. If anyone is present that wishes to speak to these rezoning items, either for or against, if you would please stand at this time. Again, if it is your intention to speak for or against any rezoning item to be heard, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you and each of you swear or affirm the testimony you will given these matters as the truth so have you got? Thank you. When you come to the podium, please give your name and address and acknowledge that you were sworn. Thank you.
Today, we have two public hearings on the consent agenda and four on the continuances. We'll start with P 33 continuance. We have proof.
Yes, we have proof of publication on the August 21st, 2024, and October 27th, 2024 editions of the Tampa Bay Times for the October 8th meeting, which was canceled due to Hurricane Milton. The item did not appear on the October 22nd meeting but appeared on the November 12th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners where it was continued to today.
Item P 33 is PDE 257738. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Evans County Line 80 MPUD Master Planning Unit Development by Evans Properties Incorporated. This is requested for a continuance to the March 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting here in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
May I have a motion to continue P 33? So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, P 34, Mr. Clerk. We have proof.
We approve publication of the hearing of this matter in the January 1st, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 34 is PDE 257834. This is a zoning amendment to the name of Harvest Hills West VOPH MPUD by Galvin Land Services. This is requested for a continuance to the March 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM here in Dade City.
May I have a motion to continue P 34? So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item P 35, we have proof.
We have proof of publication again, January 1st, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Derek?
Item P 35 is PDE 257842. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Cologne VOPH MPUD by Galvin Land Services, and this is requested for a continuance to the March 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item P 36, Mr. Clerk.
P 36, originally published in the October 23rd, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times, and was continued to from the January 14th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting where it was continued to today.
Derek?
Item P 36 is PDE 257651. This is a zoning amendment to the name of Tall Timbers MPUD by Extreme Team 41 LLC. This is requested for a continuance to the March 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, item 37, we have proof.
Proof of publication, December 25th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times supplemented by Amadeus Certified Mailings and Site Postings.
Item P 37 is PDE 25CU07. This is a conditional use amendment in the name of DV Dade LLC/Discovery Mood and Anxiety. It's a conditional use amendment to increase the number of beds from 24 to 40 in an existing residential treatment and care facility in a AR1 agricultural residential district, which is in east central Pasco County on the northwest corner of the intersection of Clinton Avenue and Windsor Wood Boulevard, containing approximately 9.37 acres. This comes to you with the recommendation to approve the conditional use request from the Planning Commission and the Planning Development and Economic Growth Department.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing none, leave it on consent? P 38, we have proof.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, December 25th, 2024.
Derek?
Item P 38 is PDE 250082. This is a development agreement, Hamilton Oaks MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, AMH Development LLC proposes a development agreement for Hamilton Oaks MPUD. This comes to you with the recommendation to approve the development agreement from the Villages of Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee and the Planning Development and Economic Growth Department.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this item?
Mr. Chairman, on P 37, actually, there was a, I believe the applicant is the only person signed up for P 37.
He's not also being asked. I'm sure he didn't want to oppose this.
I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
Are we sure it's your applicant?
No, I'm not. I'm saying I believe it to be because of the organization involved, but...
Okay. I would like them to confirm that online that they are the applicant. They purchase monitoring.
So this would be Nick Glines? You are here. Okay. I'm showing you being online. You're not speaking in opposition. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P 39, we have proof.
We have proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, January 8th, January 15th editions of 2025.
Good afternoon, Joanne Libita, Real Property Division. The Real Property team has received a petition to vacate a portion of three platted rights of way by 13 state properties. The purpose of the vacation is to consolidate the petitioner's surrounding properties for development. There were no objections to this petition, and the team recommends approval.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak to this item? This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in person or web access to sign up for this item?
None online.
All right. Is anyone here in person here to speak to this item? Okay. We'll conclude public comment. Do we have a motion for P 39? So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. We're going to go back to committee reports. Commissioner Jaeger.
Okay. Well, we had a lot going on in District 4, so I chose a few. So this might be my favorite. I was asked to read to the students at the Early Learning Coalition, and my husband always says kids five and under are my best friends, so I had a great time doing that. All right. Next slide. I was invited to the African American Club of Pasco, so I attended that last Saturday, and they're trying to do some great things with their youth and also trying to get a house, a historical marker. So that was a great group. Next one. And I was also at the pinning for the firefighters. They had 18 graduates, so I always loved going to those. And then next slide. I was at the ribbon cutting for Fifth Third Bank in Lutes, so they are going to be great community partners in the Sunlake area. And also, they gave a check to AMP Skills for $10,000, which was great, very exciting for the program. And then last was, I just wanted to give a shout out for Team Appreciation Day. That is not a great picture, Paula. And that was, as Commissioner Waitman said, he was behind me. We were thrown in the law, so it was a great day, played some pickleball, and just thankful to our great county workers, our staff. So, and that's it.
Okay. So to county administrator.
All right, thank you. I guess too, I would like to just add on that. Team Appreciation Day was a resounding success, and again, I appreciate everyone coming out and supporting our team members and appreciating the work that they do. Just as a reminder for the board, I know we had a lot of public comments regarding flooding. On February 18th, we will be having a workshop. Subject of that workshop will be stormwater flooding. We set that up as a result of the aftermath of the hurricanes to educate and to learn more about what can be done from a policy perspective as it relates to those issues here in Pasco County. That'll be advertised to the normal channels. And as I was talking with Mr. Cronin, one of the things that we forgot to mention was that we are going to celebrate International Trade and Tourism Day on February 20th. That's at 4:30 PM at the Starkey Market in Trinity. It's a great opportunity for tourism and trade partners to come together, and again, it'll be $15 per person. It's a wonderful call and event. Some of that money that gets raised actually helps to fund the exchange programs that we've done with our trade folks, we've done folks with animal services and utilities that have gone over to Germany and vice versa, and those missions happen. So that's one forum by which that's all certain.
All right. And I'll say, my Newport Ritchie Rotary is a big player in that. Commissioner Stark, I think he's going to make a donation from his campaign to make sure it happens, so if there is a shortfall of funds, hopefully they'll step up and keep this program going to keep our relationships across the pond.
Yes, I'll be happy with that.
All right, thank you. Mr. County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, one of, I know your most favorite things to do. I need an appointment to the canvassing board. My understanding is that Commissioner Waitman has agreed to do that. Is that correct? And so, he's not in the affirmative. I need a letter signed by the chairman that appoints Commissioner Waitman as the board's canvassing board representative and Greg Giordano as the alternate. So a motion to authorize the chair to sign such a letter.
I'll move the motion. Then I have a question before we vote.
A second.
Yeah. I have a motion, second question.
What, is this coming here or?
Municipals for this year.
Oh, 2025. Okay, I'm good then. That's, I was wondering if it was a next county election. It's a year to year, right?
Yes.
Year to year.
Yeah. Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. So it would only be for the municipal elections.
Right. I did my certification, so I will make good use of the time spent on that certification.
So you can determine signature verification now?
I'm going to make good use of that certification plan.
Okay.
Frankly, I always thought you were certifiable, but...
I'm certifiable. We're on the same plus, right?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you. This morning, speaker on Betmar Acres, just for the board's clarification, this is not a tax issue. This is a stormwater utility assessment that Betmar is experiencing on their golf course they have for a number of years. And we dealt with the Betmar Acres lawyers about five years ago and thought the issue was put to bed. Our position is still that they are owed the assessment, that they owe us the assessment because it is a 403, Chapter 403, stormwater utility, not a tax, not a general special But that's, you know, our position has been that for some time. They have spoken to both, they have spoken to the previous lawyer that was involved in that position and Ms. Wolfgram, who is the current lawyer in that position. I'm not sure that there's anything that we can resolve with them, but...
Miss question. We like golf courses, and we've designed a lot of them that take rainwater, stormwater, and reclaimed water. Why would we tax them for stormwater utility if they're actually part of the solution for stormwater?
It's not up in your... Good question.
It's not up in your silence.
Yeah, good question. I'm not, I was not here when the stormwater utility was developed. That is something clearly we can review with the infrastructure branch and see what, whether that's an exemption we should think about. Was dealing with the facts as I dealt with them.
No, no, no. We're just giving them, so I get it. I think we should take a look at that because I think if I'm going to have a golf course, it's going to take stormwater like I want it to, like Seven Springs Timber Oaks used to. It's a benefit to us, and we're really trying to tax the ones that don't. And all the people around at the ERUs where they're more condensed, they're paying their ERU, so I think it's something to take a look at and bring back.
Okay.
Some of the issue that we have down there is Betmar, it's going to the association, HOA Group that looks after the golf course. They're getting that bill, but their members don't want to pay it, and the members won't allow them to raise their fees for the golf course to take care of that. So it ends up on them all the time, and I don't think, they have a struggle to get the money up for that. So that's what the issue's been.
Okay. And you know what? Golf courses are, I know elsewhere around that some of them are struggling, so I think it's good to take a burden off them if we can. And again, because they're actually helping the stormwater situation, I don't think we should be taxing them for what they're helping on. But yeah, if you want to bring it back, that'd be great.
Okay. That's it.
All right. All right. I'm going to go to my committee reports, so I'm going to go right to you, Mr. County Attorney. When we heard the people today from Beacon Park come in to speak, there were hearings years ago, I want back to '06, where initially that development was supposed to access through Buffalo Drive. Then it switched over to another hearing where they allowed them to go to the Ico Clara, which is only a short, short little drive to get in. They've taken advantage of the public roads to go use their access to go in, and David Engel and David Goldstein and David Allen are working now, and Jeff should try to change that. What happened was, there was a decision made by staff, which we empowered them years ago, I think it was under Dan Biles, to give staff flexibility on doing certain things. I want to undo that flexibility from staff because staff has overruled a public hearing, which these people are very vocal on, very knowledgeable about, like one of the journalists here back in '06 earlier today. And to see that public hearing that they had protected themselves in the neighborhoods to have the development come in flipped on them, and now they got to deal with all this hassle. So I'm going to say that, Jeff, if you talk to the ordinance, I want to bring it back to us so we can reverse it back and give the power back to the commission and keep the strength in the public hearings we've had in the past, how we've decided we wanted the development to come in and for, you know, construction, etc., that they get respected, not changed by staff. This is a fatal, not a fatal error, but a very bad error that staff had made to afford. I want to make sure we don't have this happen again.
So...
Hang on a second. Commissioner...
I just want to add something to, I mean, if we're going to bring it back, that's fine. Let's find out why it ended up that way and the reasons, and then be able to make a good decision over if we should keep it that way or change it.
And I think staff can talk with you as we bring it forward, but Jeff, if you would talk to us for a minute?
Sure. You know, when I became your county attorney, and when there was a development review committee, all site plans went to the DRC as a notice public hearing item. DRC would make a decision on it after hearing public comment, and it could be appealed to the board back in the day. The rationale for doing that, the planning director at the time, was that site plans generally should be consistent with your land development code, and so therefore, there's nothing that could be done at a public hearing. As we, as you know, the, in certain instances like this one, where they were dealing with construction traffic, it wasn't really the site plan approval that was at issue, it was the how they were going to access the site. And so that, the DRC back then may put a condition on it that said this is going to be the hall route for entry and exit into this Beacon Park approval. Had it all been done in 2006, we probably wouldn't have the issues that we're having today, but this remained an undeveloped portion. And so now, this, several developers later, this is the new project coming in. I'm not so sure that it's the site plan, and we can, I mean, all can come back and you can talk about it. It may be more along the lines of whether or not deviations from the plan, the site plan, should be approved administratively or not. But that's up to you all. You know, the alt standard, as it's become known, is something that you all approve within MPUD in the zoning stage. There is also an ability to do them administratively at, under the current code, at staff level during site plan review. And to some extent, I think that's what's happened here. The other issue that is, that occurred in this particular project was... was the construction haul route was tied to moving dirt on and off the site through an excavation permit that they then chose not to use. So, there was no condition at the time that the development of the residential subdivision is currently undergoing, which is why county staff did not stop them from using these roads is because there is no condition that's legally enforceable to do that and these are public roads.
Who's the builder?
Southern.
David Allen, Assistant County Administrator Development Services. Had to change that one up. Yeah.
I have Southern Impression.
Southern Impressions Development out of Jacksonville is who the developer is. And I think, you know, I think part of the, the challenge with this particular project was, was as Mr. Stein, Stein Schneider had mentioned, was the haul road condition being on the grading permit, that same required requirement didn't carry over to the site development plan, which probably would have been appropriate in this particular case because, just because of the, the nature of the location of where this project is in proximity to existing residential uses. And so, certainly, I think that the difficulty with the request is going to be the volume of work that we process. And I think that, that not having that ability is, is going to be a challenge, but I think that there are ways that we can work around those types of deviations and ensuring that any pre-existing conditions that are on projects carry forward to subsequent reviews. Well, let me stop you a second. Let me answer this question because I, I looked at the documents all the way back from oh six. And oh six initially was going to be Buffalo Drive, switched to Aqua Clara. And in that, it said construction traffic was going into that. So, what happened to take away that condition that was in the public hearings from the DRC? Did they look for an alternative standard? They say they could put, did they put something very clearly, say their construction traffic could go somewhere else? Is there something I'm missing? No. Because that's what public hearing said. So, the, the haul route was specific to the mass grading plans, which included. Let me stop you. Mass grading and construction activities. In oh six, it was all construction activities. Didn't talk about mass grading. It was oh, oh six. Subsequent approval, however, was the site development plan, which then did not have the construction route specifications within the standards. But how does it disappear? If it wasn't mentioned, how does it disappear that the construction route now changes?
Because they were the same approval. They were, they were equivalent approvals. So, between oh six, when it was done by the DRC and then subsequently ratified by the board and the ones that were issued more recently, they were issued administratively because the board gave site plan authority to staff. There, there is no more notice public hearing for a site plan.
That's okay, but what I'm saying is the site plan, or the approval done with DRC back in oh six said your construction traffic had to go in Aqua Clara. Didn't talk about mass grading, just that. And where in the, in the, from staff changes to talk about mass grading, it's mass grading, but.
That condition was not carried forward in the new, in the, in the more recent approval.
How does it disappear, though? If it was in the MPUD and it wasn't mentioned, because it wasn't carried forward, it's still in the conditions from back in oh six.
It wasn't in the zoning conditions, it was in the site plan approval and a subsequent site plan approval took that condition off.
I don't, did it address the construction traffic? It did not. Did not. And rather than taking it off, I think, I think it was just, it was not carried forward in terms of the. So, if it's not mentioned, why wouldn't it still stay? Because one thing, if you say construction traffic can go through public roads or through other things, but if you don't mention it, I don't think that thing in oh six disappears. There's a public hearing, we had people in there speaking about it, fighting for it, had the condition put in. If you didn't take it away, I don't think just because you don't mention it, it doesn't disappear. It's still there.
Chair.
Commissioner Waitman.
At this point, I mean, are these, whenever these are amended, are they redlined like an, like an addendum or amendment to a contract, like an RFP site? That way you can see what was there and what wasn't there?
Generally, what would happen.
It's for the record and.
Right. So, part of the challenge here is, is the way that we handle the, the approval process has changed.
So, that answers no.
So, that answers no.
Answers no.
It's an entirely different form of approval.
I'm just looking, I'm just talking. All right, you're good. So, the builder at the time, if it changes contract, they may or may not be looking what was said back in oh six.
It's not even the same property owner. The, the, the property owner in oh six that got, it was a DR Horton project that got the initial approvals, at least my research is, and now it's a property owner out of Texas with Southern Impressions as doing the site work.
So, things can get lost in translation.
Well, they've been found. And I'm saying if a public hearing done in oh six in front of the people with the documents there that said construction traffic has to go through there, whether you mention it or not, other approvals, other alternate standards, if you didn't cover clearly, construction traffic goes somewhere else, I think they got the right to have them stopped.
And my legal opinion, Commissioner, is that the site plan that was issued by staff administratively superseded the oh six approval.
How can a staff approval overtake a public hearing?
Because you changed the process in the interim. And you no longer require that public hearing.
But, but again, I haven't heard, we're in the new approval, that you dealt with the construction traffic. And if you didn't deal with it, it's still there. How does it disappear?
It's a completely different approval. And that's, when you, when you revise an approval, it takes over the previous approval completely. I mean, they issued a new legal approval for a different site plan for the same property. That's what controls them.
Site plan, site plan. But if we're talking about access and they put access in as a separate.
A condition was on the site plan, it was not on the zoning. I'd agree with you all day long if that was a condition of the MPUD rezoning, but that's not where that condition got attached to it. Got attached to it at a notice public hearing before the DRC that is, that then was, then the board's change of the land development code took away the public hearing and gave it to an administrative body to approve.
I, but I don't think, just because another hearing was held, if you didn't address the issue, the previous law of approval goes away. I mean, if, if, a site plan's a site plan and if you want to talk about your mass grading go a certain way, I don't think that thing goes away. I think you've got something to work with.
There were two approvals that staff issued. One was mass grading and one was the site plan. The site plan had no conditions in it regarding a haul route. The mass grading plan was not utilized and abandoned by the app.
I want to sit down and I'll review this with staff, but at the minimum, at least right now, how do we go change this rule of staff changing these things?
It would take a land development code amendment. I think your planning director wants to speak to it.
Chair.
Commissioner Waitman.
So, two things. So, staff unilaterally amended the, the decision.
They had an application from the developer, they processed it in the due course, they issued an approval.
Staff?
Staff.
Okay. Next piece is, are these, what's the condition of these roads? If the volume of dump trucks are running up and down it, they are public road under ordinary use, how much life has been eroded away from it? And the roads were never intended to handle volume of, and the weight of the commercial traffic. I don't know. I'd hate, I'd hate that to be a piece of something that the taxpayer has to. I think if there's a decent partner in this contractor, I would hope in hearing the public's uproar, you know, they could be a good partner, using my legal terms, right Jeff? Be a good partner and help them be a solution to fix, at least clean it up, right? It's all in how, it's all in how we respond now, right? The damage is done. So, that avenue at this point, to me, is almost more important because then it's going to exacerbate the frustrations of the neighborhood that the roads haven't eroded away with the volume of traffic and we get a couple of weather events next couple of years and then they're coming and say, hey, we need our roads repaid because of the situation that Chairman Mariano was talking about today. So, I think we need to look further downstream, how we get this cleaned up the right way. Thank you.
David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director. Commissioner Waitman, you bring up some good valid points and that's what I wanted to speak to today. We had a meeting with the officers of the Beacon Park Homeowners Association this morning. We are going to, we discussed the situation. They realize that the current development order and site plan does not regulate access in and out of the site. We have a number of things we're going to do and we're going to report back to the Beacon Park HOA at the next meeting. I'm going to look very carefully through the conditions of approval for that MPUD to see if there's anything that we could hang our hat on regulating and requiring access. We're, we also have, I believe, a meeting tomorrow with David Allen and Jason Mickle to talk about post-development road, road restoration project. Compliance is now engaged and there'll be a designated point person, so if there's violations to our hours of work and noise requirements in our land development code, we will expeditiously respond to that. And I could tell you that the HOA officers were very pleased with our attitude and the fact that we are doing everything possible to help them. So, speaking about discretionary deviations from board policy, back in the summer, the current planning department was reconsolidated with planning and development. We have measures in place that will make sure that this situation does not occur again. There is a SOP we're developing now requiring supervisory approval of all the plans and permitting before they're executed. And we have what's called a planning check instituted at our current planning division where the board approvals and memorialization of policy pertaining to any particular development is carried out at the site plan level. So, let's say hypothetically, Beacon Park came up today and what we're dealing with today, I would review it and determine that there's a board policy question and I would, I would render the, the decision to bring it back to the board as a substantial modification of their approval because this isn't a minor deviation, this is a substantial deviation. So, we have the check and balances in place to make sure that board policy is maintained and there's no arbitrary approvals going forward.
And I'll tell you, the manager of this project, contractors, have been just brutal to these people. I'm going to show you a couple of pictures of what this is going through. I've got homes that have, had to put a black screen on the back of their fence where they had, it used to be just woods, whatever. And granted, things are going to change, but instead they got a large trailer truck with Burgess Civil Engineering right in their backyard, that's their view now, right front. They could have, they could have angled it back to minimize the impact. Oh, thank you for putting pictures up. Then you look at the edge of, this is the edge of a yard, right where you see the grass, that was the yard. And within like eight feet, you got a cliff going down to where they're putting a lift station, of all things. And that's, I mean, good rain, that thing erodes away, but even still, not, not good for the, for the long term. They had it nice and loud, they kind of turned it up at night so you could see the pump that's kind of blocked, boxed out to minimize the damage. They could have pumped that thing like 50 yards away. Instead, they put it right by the home, so they got to look at it and listen to it. Go ahead and go to the next picture. Sorry, I got to go back a little bit.
That looks a little less serious.
Yeah, all right. So, there's the, there's there, this is one of the houses right on the left side. This is the pool. This is like their pride and joy. I mean, these people have a capana out there, put a TV against the wall with a nice cover on it. That's the pool. No, that's the concrete wearing away from the pool because of the vibrations. So, they can't even use their pool and all the dust and dirt is what they're going to deal with? Go ahead and go to the next one. Next one? That's, Mr. Fritz, 100 years old, my dad. That could be, okay, that's it. All right. So, anyway, so what these people are dealing with, it's been brutal every step of the way and they're just, it's not what we designed. And again, if this public hearing was not so clear envisioned to when we made him go Aqua Clara, and part of the reason was not even to think, that we didn't think about going down that road through Coral Creek Loop, there's probably more sink homes in areas built over wetlands and marshland, etc., so a lot of settling going on. And the roadways that go through, there's only one part that's settled down a little bit already, but you get these roads that are with these huge truck traffics, as they say, when they get older, it exponentially damages these roads. So, I know staff's talking about doing some looking at the roads. Frankly, it needs to be done immediately and just kind of like get this guy to the table. But I will tell you, between the contract and between the developer, it's the worst I've ever dealt with as far as like, you know, what's reasonable, what's better. And for them, again, going 1.1 miles, it would have slowed the development down getting done, but if they had started the other way, they could have worked their way to it because they still got to start everything from the other end anyway. So, I mean, literally just been, it's been brutal. And Jeff, if you can bring this back to us and we can look at it, it's something we need to change. We need, when you have the public hearings that you have and people come on, they spend the time to go protect the neighborhood, have the hearings, decisions are made, we can't have staff changing these things. And I still want to go through this, Mr. County Attorney, with you, to what was actually changed from oh six. I haven't seen those documents, I just saw the original ones, to when the public hearing was. I want to see what really we looked at because I still can't get past turning over a public hearing when some clearly didn't say, all right, we're going to change your access. All right, stay on that picture there, that's good. That's a different one.
Okay. If I could just add something to the conversation, notwithstanding the things that Mr. Engel have brought up, some of the things we, we've been talking about internally too is, as we see more infill projects coming back into the county is, is really something that I just kind of call thoughtful design in looking at how these site plans and things that are configured. Because sometimes you do have individual groups looking, look at the, the instance of this pump station being right, right where it's at, you know? You know, are there things that our team members can be looking at, looking at the holistic picture in terms of, you know, how we move our approvals? So, we're going to be talking more about that because I think you're going to see more and more of that as we do more infill projects, smaller projects that are going to kind of, kind of fit into the, into the nooks and crannies that need to peacefully coexist with residents and people that have built their lives. So, I just appreciate the, the conversation on this and just know that your team has listened and that we are, we are moving forward in the right direction.
I say, I got, I got faith in you guys, but again, I need to make sure we, if we need to change rules to make sure that we don't get stuck in a situation like this because there's just no need for that. And it could happen again, I don't want to see it happen. Here's one I want to show you, just a few pictures of, this is Crowder Estates, you've heard them, the ladies speak before, as you've heard someone else speak. This is one where it used to be one house per 10 acres in the sole development, it's now been changed to 180. When this came before the board, it didn't show access on this little side road umbrella, which went right through the middle school. Now it does. And not only does it show just an easement what they had permission for, but now they've come in with, I don't even told staff, they've raised this land up like eight feet. So, now you see that huge pitch going down? That's going to the bottom of an area and this is at the bottom of a bowl of this whole area. So, all the water's going to go to this low area and now you've taken out a lot of the storage by building this road. Go ahead and take another picture. Now, they've knocked down a school sign, a school sign down, a school zone sign, they left it there on the ground. Absurd. Go ahead and next one.
I think that's all of that.
That's all for that? Okay. So, if you looked from the berms that are up over there where that house is, it's about, to the top of that berm is probably six feet higher than where the lady's property is and where the, and where that pond is on the other side, there's not even buffer between the two. So, all the water, and this is the lowest pond, and everything that's going to be built in is going to come in. I mean, you got a retention wall up by that one house with the wood around it and then you got the street that's there and then all that water. Very, very poorly designed for the people, great for them. Commissioner, open.
Yeah, some of the issues, we, excuse me. Some of the issues that we're finding out when we're going back in infilling, they're raising the land up, which makes the property.
they're raising the land up, which makes the property next door lower and really creates some problems. Zephyr Hills, the city raises that property four or five feet higher. And some of the county property is a bowl. And there's only one place the water goes in that bowl. So we need to watch how we build next door and don't cause a problem by raising up the, the height of the land to create a problem next door, which they hadn't had one before.
And we heard the one about the city today too. So I don't know what we can do about city annexations and this, this going on, but this has got to be handled better. But again, this is like county to county, changing a big use of property from a little easement to now they're building a road. Kind of crazy. All right, um, I'll go through my, rest of my pictures. All right, I joined the VFW today, auxiliary of this past week. That's my dad there, that's Judy Kennedy there, and my pseudo cousin Laurie Capone. And the next picture? That's my dad holding the flag. That's going to be the flag that the, the picture they're using. He's, he's the patriotic leader of the VFW there over at Dick Street. Tony Rowe, 042. All right, next one? And that's Fritz. We're going to do a resolution with him next meeting. If the board doesn't mind, I want to do it about 1:30 because I've got the installation of the PHSC president in the morning. So just to make sure, I'll get them there for 1:30 if we do that first thing. But Fritz is now 100 years old. And that's his daughter right there. A World War II veteran at Normandy.
Yeah.
Great, great, great man. I'll tell you what, still doing stuff. And we were like cleaning this house out for the flooding that was going on. Literally the days after, he's like going in the terrace floors, scraping up a little bit of glue that's left over all, all the way through. Just a great, great human being. His brother's 97 now, so
What's his age?
He's, he's 100, just turned 100.
Oh, just turned 100.
And his brother's just turned 97.
God bless them.
Yeah, great, yeah, great guys.
They still fight?
Uh, no. They're, they're, they're great.
They probably do.
They're going to be great. It's amazing. All right, go ahead. This is when we're down to the eagles. And look at that shirt.
Oh, I like that.
Ben threw Helena back. This man lost his home. People helped him get another one. The next picture shows, the picture's on. But this guy come up to me in tears after they had given us the plaque to stamp. Sound how thankful he was of all that the county had done for him. There's the back, all the sponsors that kind of helped out the community. Uh, and I don't know if you know, that's Angel and Rachel. Rachel spoke to us a little while ago about an item. While we were there, because we had so many people there, they were going to do the reveal the next day, wouldn't be able to light a crowd. I was, let's go try to do it now. So they agreed, and they're having a baby boy.
Oh.
Pretty cool. And that was at St. Leo University. Dewey Mitchell's in the audience. Keep going. And Ed Harain. And that's a, uh, part of the, in the nursing school, that's, you know, the, the nursing school opening up, there was a big deal. Whole second floor, and they got all these mummies, or whatever you want to call them, robots that test everything that's going on with bodies all the way through.
Kind of scary, it has a blood pressure.
It's, it's kind of funny, because it moves and the eyes blink. So they do something wrong, some crazy things might happen.
It might be the place.
All right, go ahead, next one? Uh, that was us getting our plaques.
Are you talking or sitting?
Yeah, they got one for Sonia, myself, it's pretty cool. There's Angel on the back. Is that all? Okay. All right. And then I had Regional Planning Council. And I, I'm sorry I missed the employee appreciation date, but I had Regional Planning Council, which I would have missed if not for the second part with the resiliency summit that we had coming up. I wanted to see the agenda and talk about the agenda. So I sent you guys a copy later last night after I got it. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. But the front page shows you the event details, early bird pricing, registered attendees, some sponsors going in. Uh, but I was most concerned and wanted to get your take, and if you're not ready to even comment on it today, so be it. Uh, but I just wanted you to take a look at the, uh, items they have as far as what the agenda's going to be. Uh, they got a mayor's panel. I frankly told them, I says, that's fine with that. But I really think, especially nowadays, when we just went through these storms, that we should have an administrators' panel. We should have the FEMA manager officials out there in, in a panel. We should have people like David Allen and other people for planning talking about how we're going to rebuild, what we're going to go do, and how to look at things. On our energy transition, one of the things I mentioned is you've got, you know, Duke there, great, but you know, what about, what about TECO? What about with Lakuci Electric? Uh, local people that are invested in the community a little bit more so. The next one I was okay with, the break, they should, uh, the urban forest resilience in Tampa Bay strategic path forward. To take a spot for something like that, I don't know if that was the best move we could have made, but they have their points they want to make. Alternative funding strategy, making it work for your capital. You know, again, if I had FEMA reps in there, if I had permitting people, the following day permitting practices, they've got Mike Twitty, who I think's doing a phenomenal job, he's got some great ideas. I think all the appraisers should be in and maybe talking about what the tax status is going to be with all these homes that are looking for abatements. What's the effect going to be? That would be better for them, and they can make some recommendations. Like Mike Twitty actually put a really good thing together. And something, Mike, if you talked to them, what they did was, they put something in an ordinance where if there's a trust and the trust is in someone's name and it's homesteaded, they can go through and still do the owner contractor, so they can do work on their own place and still not be penalized where they can't sell those for a year. So if something happens in a major year, that's something that they did that we can go learn from them and go put that in. We want to take it further to allow everybody to go do it, especially in a hurricane situation. FEMA's not anywhere on this sheet, and they should be there as well. And I think we should actually have like three building officials together. It won't be five building officials. Let them be in the same room and let them deal with FEMA and just see what each one of them are told.
It says day two FEMA staff to be determined disaster recovery panel.
Yeah, but it's not set up yet. I will, I will say, I gave, I gave accolades. I got Kevin Guthrie coming.